A pledge of data is necessarily well. And to the Republicans, we should stand as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Well, the meeting to order. Thank you. Here.
Please.
Well, there. Okay, are there any public comments? And when I refer to public comments now, so we're gonna have the hearing on the solar zoning application. Later on in the. Uh, agenda. Solar then, are there any non-solar zoning public comments?
Yeah.
Come on. Well, thank you, sir.
Yeah. My name is Noah Morris. I live at three oh four West Evergreen. I'm sure you guys have. Have heard a lot about this, but I'd just like some answers on when and what is gonna be done. On Evergreen, because I've asked multiple people and I've gotten really no answers other than it's been approved. Uh. Do you want to?
Yeah, it's everything's been submitted to I D O S. Once we get to go ahead, we'll have the contractor come off site and get the road repaired.
Okay, but what, like what, how are we repaired?
It's gonna be milled all the way down and then it's gonna be a new, um, or like basically the way it was before, but no.
Okay, and so what's gonna happen with that when the new construction starts and the new subdivision? That's gonna become an app.
We're not intending to let them tear up another road, so we'll formally battle.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering, because I mean, I don't know if you've seen my house, if you've seen three oh four West Evergreen, but my. Vehicles have been damaged. Quite a bit from it, um. Uh, haven't been able to open my windows or my paddle wash my vehicle constantly because of it and. I don't know if you've seen it lately, but the pipe holes are horrible and I keep only getting rocks in my driveway and my yard, boulders from it. I'm pretty sure the village has actually put some of the boulders in my yards when they've been kind of cleaning up, so. I was just kind of wondering, I've kind of asked a couple of people, you know, that are. About it and I have got no answer, so I figured this would be my one way to actually get an answer. So do we have any kind of timeframe when that might happen? Or is it just gonna be?
This fall. I don't wanna give you a date and then something comes up and then not actually happened on that exact.
So there really no answer to it?
No, this fall. I'm saying this fall and I apologize for the inconvenience that it's caused. It didn't make any sense to redo the road. Bar into the construction, all the heavy trucks of the sewer plant made that. It makes sense to redo that.
Yeah.
I apologize for the inconvenience it's caused. Yeah, not trying to diminish that. It was a once in a. Every fifteen. That we do that scale for it's sewer plant. And it wasn't an inconvenience.
And the only really unknown delay is how long it's gonna take I D O S to respond. Three years more of your tax money they have to approve. Plans, plans.
How long? It takes time you submit, uh, when they follow up.
Well, you gotta wait. For, I mean, you gotta send it by in the mail, right? And it's all paper process. It just depends. We just got a new, a couple of stacks of paper that you need to sign tonight, actually.
Okay.
So there's a, but after we get that sent in, I don't think. Whenever they say go ahead, we'll have them out there. I mean, Stark is already. Yeah, Stark is already ready to do it.
No, I tell them, okay, and so what does that mean for access of my property when they started doing it?
I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Likewise, to be able to pull them to my driveway while I have access to my house when they do that, they can do it in stages.
What we, what we've done, um, for this project is whenever driveways are blocked off, you're not able to access them. We'll send out flyers to the neighborhood, basically saying this is what you can expect around this time. And make arrangements and the construction crews have been good to work with the neighbors whenever their driveways walk off.
Okay, so it is Stark, though, as you said, when I was a contractor, okay. Yeah, those people at Stark, so I'll look into that as well. So.
Um, all the documents are public, so I'm happy to share those.
Yeah, I love that. I reached out to a couple of people and never got any. Uh, the mayor's been one and I've reached out to, um, maybe as well has been one, so then I've gotten, you know, answers on it and then it's coming. It's been approved, so. I just like, yeah, so, yeah, it's gonna like to get an answer, but I fear it's been one way to do it, so.
Well, hopefully our future projects, there won't be a need to allow truck traffic on Evergreen. I think that's one of the things that really degraded that and caused it to fall.
Yeah, absolutely.
With the rest of the roadway around the curve getting.
Yeah, and so with the future, the future development of that, when they do the neighborhood, would that be a discussion as well, like how they do it? Or is it, I hear there's gonna be a four-way stop sign there?
Wait.
Eng- engineers have been, we've asked engineers to look at that, whether or not that that would be appropriate.
Okay.
We can't just willy-nilly put them in because we think we have to, uh. I think the item manual requires an engineering study. To say, yes, there's justification what signage is required because it'll be right after that last curve. Okay, we don't want people to go, you know, see their stop signs. So there's, so some considerations and in fact, which I only talked about today. Because as those get built, there's more and more traffic through there if they require a stop sign.
Okay, okay, well, thank you. I guess. I'll just wait to hear more. And I mean, I mean, I know it's all, but I mean, it's.
Kind of our control.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Anything on that one? Will the road out of city flat, are you gonna carry that at the end of the, of the curve? Out to the sewer plant? Is that even done as well?
It'll stop at the service drive to the sewer plant.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move us to consent agenda. And here we have the minutes from the August twelfth meeting. For bills, the amount of eighty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars seventeen cents.
That was, um, it's all clear. And that, um, wasn't correct. It should be, um. Sixty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. That was, that number was just pulled from the incorrect.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
It is.
Sixty-six eight thirty-three six.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. All that's, okay, yeah, no problem. And then. The permit benefit. Street concert. Which is in the packet, if you have any questions about that. Or any questions about the. Minutes, the bills or the special use permit.
I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Peter?
Yes.
Oh, this. Well, first of all.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Okay, we're opening up the public hearing. Consideration, the recommendation of planning and zoning. Commission regarding the application by Butso to amend the zoning designation of a parcel located at. Legal description. In your agenda and other land from all want to agriculture. Uh. I'm assuming a lot of folks here are prepared for the solar. Did we have?
Um, I'm gonna read through the list and then if you do wanna speak, just come on up to the podium. If you don't, just wave me off. Uh, I will clarify, this is just a land use. Question at this point, this is not anything related to stormwater development or anything like that. Uh, they would have to get approvals. Our engineers would review everything from that standpoint. So just. Clarifying that to everybody that, that their questions were going in stormwater. This isn't providing a building permit or anything like that. Um, so I'll read through this list now. Um, Tracy Hubert. Um, Adam Campbell.
Yes. No.
Sorry, we grabbed my phone out here, prepared a little.
Yeah, this. Thing is a little wobbly, so as you come up, you're trying not to lean on it.
That is a good call. I prepared that. Uh, so I just wanted to speak out.
Well, sorry, I need, I need to read through the, you know. So you already did the sign up sheet, but during the public comment portion of the meeting, individuals can address the board on listed or unlisted agenda items. Rules, uh, include stating, uh, name and address, limiting comments to five minutes and avoiding profanity or abuse. The mayor may limit repetitive or out of order comments. Organized groups should choo- should choose a specific. The need for that.
Thank you. Uh, so I just want to speak out, uh, as a member of the St. Joseph community, I truly believe a community solar project would be a great step forward for all of us. Community solar makes clean energy more accessible, helps lower utility bills and strengthens our local energy systems. Just like any other market, when supply increases, demand pressure goes up. I'm sorry, demand pressure goes down and prices stabilize. By adding more local solar power to the grid, we can help ease the rising solar or rising energy costs and reduce our reliance on high-priced sources. Creating more predictable bills and long-term savings for everybody. The need for energy is, is only growing as technology becomes a bigger part of our daily lives. Taking a proactive approach now will improve the quality. Of life for our community well into the future. For example, my family in the last year has reduced our electricity usage by twenty-five percent. We've only seen a thirteen dollar decrease in our bill. That's four percent. Uh, what our total bill is. In fact, even with the reduced. Use, our daily costs have increased by twenty-six cents a day over the course of a year. That's a hundred dollars. You know, that's, that's a big deal for, for families. I'm already working on a decreased budget. For many families, that extra hundred dollars could be. Be a big difference around the holiday season. That's why I would urge the board to consider the relief and stability this project could bring the community when making your decision. Beyond the financial benefits, community solar also brings new jobs, clean energy opportunities to St. Joseph. Uh, benefits, self-service for years to come. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ray Knight. No. Um, Roger Purcell.
Field.
Uh, Noah Morris with already, you were, you wanna speak on this one too?
No.
Um. The applicants to be last, um. Uh. Is it, um.
Gammer, yeah.
Gannon.
Gannon.
No, um, Bruce Stickers.
Yeah, uh. Time to figure out, just if you could come up to a tiny now.
Um, just thank you.
I'm Bruce Stickers, one fifteen East Evergreen Drive. I'm the Greenwich District Commissioner and we have a Greenwich. Tile that goes through there. Is this meeting a property that wanted to discuss that or would it be the? Next one when we wanna build a project?
You, you can discuss whatever you would like. All I was bringing up was that our engineers were reading all of those stormwater considerations. And if there's any only restricting, that will come up. But we're not gonna spend a lot of money on engineers at the front end of this at this point for just a zoning. Question throughout parcel.
Well, as you consider, I just want you to know that there's. Our main tile that rains most of the east side of. St. Joseph runs diagonally through that site and you guys have a, at least one and maybe two. Laterals that go off of that. And so. And if something is built there. Need to consider, for instance, last fall, we had that one of the tiles broke. And be repaired, have to go in there with a backhoe. And so. You need some kind of easement. To allow that. The other consideration is that. This tile has been in here about a century. Things don't last forever and it is very possible that. That diagonal tile line that runs through there would be, need to be replaced before any kind of a. Solar farm would go through its, you know, complete life cycle, so. Those things are important to us and, uh. I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Bussel.
Go on. Peter, I'm getting up to talk to this thing. Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanna thank all of you for the service you do to the community. That's wonderful. My name is Charles Bussel. I live in two oh one Spring Circle in Urbana. Some banner address, but actually live in the county. Uh, my family has lived in St. Joseph area for over a hundred years. Uh, tonight, uh, I would like to, uh, present vaccine options, uh, for, uh, for productive use of the, uh. Two point eight three acres that I have. Um. Uh, we are proposing a solar array for land and the benefits would be to reduce power bills for the neighbors. About five thousand dollars a year in tax revenue for the village. Um, Ray will be, uh, environmentally safe and removable if the village wants to, uh, do drainage project through there. Uh, the aesthetics, uh, would be dealt with by offensive landscaping. Uh. When we, uh, purchased the land, the village was, uh, had a multiple chances to acquire the, the, uh, land for detention reasons, but passed on that. Uh, we have held land for seventeen years, always looking for, uh, use, uh, that benefits the community. Um, we have, uh. Uh, we've allowed the F, uh, the F A to, um. Uh, farm land for seventeen years, uh, at no cost, generating about two twenty thousand dollars to their benefit. Uh, we are proud to have supported our local youth in that manner. Uh. We see three ways the property to, uh, concern the village. The first, of course, is the, the solar right. We think that's a great idea. It which generates income, tax revenue, um, and, uh, energy savings. Uh. The other alternative is, is we could, uh, uh, subdivide the property and go ahead and build on it. Yes, that can be done. Um. And then the third would be, uh, actually, I would love to see this one where the village, uh, buys the land for and makes it into a park. Be a great place, you know, not near on any streets. Kids can play without worrying about it. Uh, we hope, uh, you will choose, uh, the option that best balances the public benefit and property rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Price. No. Um. Uh. How yours is that old, yeah?
Oh, I mean, when.
No, you're. Um, Curtis, uh, Dylan.
Uh, Curtis Dylan, one of the, uh, but. I believe. Against this. Due to the fact of several information that they are talking to neighbors, uh, property value decrease. The, uh. Overall aspect of worrying and how, of worrying about having to use for the property. I love that. I never heard the other projects that have talked and discussed, or being a part. That would be your best, I think. But, see, this is our opinion. Probably because. The destruction. And, and honestly worrying about having a. Personal. Any kind of gain for the owner of the property. That's a chance you take when you buy a property. I don't think the rest of the company should have to pay more. And like I said, the decrease of our property values around those. It's not. Desirable, it's not. Aesthetically pleasing to those who live directly on it. I live. Across the street from it, so I would be able to see that.
Had it all painted out.
I got you. Don't worry, Kurt. Yeah. Uh, but overall, I do not leave. And only providing, due to the numbers that we heard at the zoning meeting. Only providing for. Basically enough power for fifty-five houses. I don't believe the overall is worth that. Because that is, the overall benefit is what I was still, what I was understanding. Only fifty-five houses do not overall benefit. It's the village township. And that's my opinion. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jusly.
Thanks, guys. Um. You're here, you're here, the, for the zoning deal. I said it before, I don't think anybody would want this. This Butts House could buy a backyard. Nobody wants to sit there and look at that. This is agriculture community. We've got the corn and soybeans and kids that go out there and farm that. That's awesome for them. That's making them money. Maybe Mr. Butso could offer that out to let them buy it from you. Maybe we could get together with. That would do something for them. Let the F F A have a chance of getting it. But, I mean, is there a solar field in your backyard?
You weren't happy to have one there.
Good for you. I'll sell you a house if this goes through.
It was surrounded by a fence with landscaping, as was discussed, I'd be more.
Either way, I don't want it. My neighbors don't want it. Nobody wants it. Everybody was at the zoning meeting. Nobody thought it was a good idea either and. The, the heat that comes off of those, the E M Fs, we don't know. The Sangamon solar people. Have never put in a commercial project like this before. All they've done is the little ones on the houses. So they're gonna be, this is gonna be experimental project for them. When it's all said and done, what do we got? Who knows? We don't know. They don't know. They don't know what to do with the solar panels. If one of them gets damaged, they storm at their house, at their little barn they've got over off of, uh. Prospect there. This little building, they, they didn't have any answer for that. The financial part of it, what the village was really gonna give, what the people were gonna give, when we could hook on to it, it was all pretty sketchy too. I, it's, it's a bad idea. I don't want it in my backyard and I don't think you would either if you lived there. My property will decrease. There's, it, it's just not. If something happens in there and like what happened in Maroa, they said this could still be live. Don't let any kids out there. Don't let any animals out there. Don't let you have. You know, if there's a big storm that comes through, something happens to that. The environmental. Issues with solar stuff that gets damaged, that's all sketchy too. Nobody's really. Understanding that and I don't want it in my backyard and I've, none of my neighbors do. And then the people who were here during the zoning. Commission, there was not one person here that wanted it, other than the solar people and Mr. Butso. I wish he could find something else to do with it. I really do. But until then, this needs to be put on hold to find something else to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth, please.
Mm-hmm. I just wanna reiterate everything that's been said. I'm totally against it. It is right in our backyard. We are within a hundred feet of that. Property. Less, less than that, actually, about six feet. Um, the aesthetics really, really is upsetting, I think, and. We're a little higher. That land's very low. I don't. You know, they talked about height and we weren't sure and the angles and. You know, the heat off of it, but. Just the looks of it. I just think it's a small area for the middle of the village and I just don't think it's. Appropriate for a solar field. Like, just need some better answers for that. We, um. Lived there for twenty-three years and. We just real love it and. The fence, you know, it was mentioned to me that it could be painted different colors by the. People who. Are around it, that own the properties next to it and. What's that gonna look like? You know, all different colors of the fence and I, and I don't have any. Confidence that our values will grow and survive and. I just. I just think it would be a shame for Noah, but the whole should. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Uh, the applicants, um, Beth and Elijah, do you wanna go at the same time or do you wanna, or how are we gonna do this? Okay, so. Get some handouts. Behind. That should be providing to. Hi, so I provided you with a, uh. A single line diagram of what the design would look like and a few pieces of information on the blue sheet. And then we took together as many questions as we could write down from the previous meeting and wrote out the. Uh, questions and answers, uh, in there as well. So hopefully several of the concerns that were addressed in some of the previous, uh. Neighbors, uh, is, uh, acknowledged in there. One thing that wasn't acknowledged was, um. Uh, the painting of the fence that ultimately would be decided by the permitting department and approval of that as opposed to just podge-podge paints. Um, hello, my name is Eli Smith. I'm the founder of Sangamon Solar. We're a seven-year-old solar installation company based out of Champaign. We were introduced to the Butts House roughly four months ago, who were interested in this project. We were interested in the project specifics enough to lead us to the meeting that we're at right now. We're looking to change the zoning for the property from residential to agricultural with a special use permit to install solar panels. Right now, the lot is being farmed for agricultural purposes and so as a starter, we'd like to acknowledge that the land should be zoned to act. And is being used for act purposes. I'm, imagine all of you have driven down Main Street and been able to peer to your rights at the farm fields. Uh, in the center of town and. This is an L-shaped lot and the portion that we're looking to discuss today is the back, uh, rectangle, uh, section of the L. This is a far back lot. Uh, the land is in a concealed area with more than sixty percent of the property being bordered by trees. So there's really only forty percent of this space, which is actually visible, which we believe makes an ideal candidate for adding solar panels. So there's really only forty percent of this space which is actually visible, which we believe makes an ideal candidate for adding solar panels. The village of St. Joseph should be looking for low-impact areas such as this lot. For the two and a half acres we wish to use, the village gains actually stands to gain closer to nine thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars a year in property taxes from the site. So nearly double what we thought it was on their last meeting. Moreover, acknowledging the compromises necessary to get this project approved. Sangamon Solar agrees to sell its electricity at three cents per kilowatt hour or more cheaper than the electricity bought from Ameren. For the entirety of the system's lifetime. For a system of this size, which would produce seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and one kilowatt hours in its first year. That's twenty-three thousand, sixty-one dollars or more of savings to the people of St. Joseph would receive each year. Or assuming fifty-five houses are serviced, an average savings of four hundred and nineteen dollars per house per year. This land is already being used for agricultural, commercial purposes, so. For us to ask to convert it from what has been used for agricultural purposes to convert it to ag with a special use permit of. Solar panels isn't that far of a leap. We want to do farming, same as the land is currently being used, but for electricity. I've figured out the fact sheet that answers many of the questions asked by residents during the last meeting on Thursday. I don't think I need to go through all of them, but from what I could gather. The neighbors' best argument for the project not proceeding was that they liked the view of the corn and soybeans on the Butts Out property. And they didn't want to look at a wooden fence with landscaping. This argument, while fair enough in expressing, is not strong enough to justify denying the Butts House's use of their property. Is the idea of having solar panels in town any more ridiculous than having farmland in the center of town? In practical terms, the neighbors affected by this project will most. Will be most affected by their views changing from corn and soybeans to a wooden fence with landscaping. Neighbors do that all the time. That's fair for neighbors to do to one another. We have solar panels. We can have solar panels at or below the height of the fence. The permitting decide, department can decide that. Of course, we're here to decide whether the land should be able to be rezoned or not. People have prejudices against solar and worry that any solar panels could mean lowering their property values. These are ve- real valid concerns which can and are being acknowledged with an emphasis on panel concealment. And offering discounted electricity to the residents. We're fencing it in and concealing the panels that are inside. The Butts Allos already have the right to do this, to put a fence around their property. They aren't doing that right now. The land is already being used for commercial purposes. The land should be rezoned to ag for the special use permit. During the last meeting, there were roughly eight speakers who voiced their concerns into this approval of the rezoning. Two of which, to my knowledge, were neighbors directly adjacent to the lot. During Sangamon Solar's canvassing of the neighborhood, which we were able to do twice, and again, one time this evening. Sangamon Solar received fourteen letters of support from the village as a whole. And we received another letter of support this evening, which we now have. Um, that actually was with one of the doctors. Perfect. Um, so we now actually have three neighbors that are directly adjacent to the property who voiced their letter of support. And fourteen total letters of support from the village as a whole. So there are more in favor of this project coming to fruition than there are against it, even though that wasn't shown on this last Thursday meeting. But ultimately, what are the best, what's in the best interest of St. Joseph? And what we're proposing is adding. The Butts House and Sangamon Solar believe it is adding thirty-two thousand dollars in growing in value each year. Adding to the community rather than doing nothing. The both Butts Houses have donated their land to the FFA for the last seventeen years. As tech has modernized and grown, the lot doesn't have the space enough for modern equipment. The FFA should have different farmers' families share the burden of farming real-life farms like all other or most other FFAs. The Butts Houses have donated this land in the past and should not be, that should not be an excuse for withholding significantly greater gains to the village against it. Any permit would still have to be approved by, for any project, and that would come with insignificant concessions. Not allowing this rezoning is a mistake for the town and a disservice to the Butts House, which have done, already donated so much to the community. Right now, the land is being farmed as if it is ag. The land should be rezoned to ag with a special use permit to install solar panels. Thank you.
Thank you. There anyone else?
I've got a question about the landscaping that's been mentioned a few times. I've been in that industry for a whole five. What's the landscaping specifications on that?
Uh, the, uh, the first iteration's ultimately, right, this has to be, we want to work with the community. We want to work with permitting. We want this lot to be as aesthetically appealing to the neighbors as we can make it. And so our, the, the example that we've used and you've used to show our willingness to. Find the solution is to put a six-foot-high fence, a wooden fence or higher up. And our providers was our first idea of the type of shrub that we can install that can grow high enough to ensure that no panels were visible. But ultimately, we would very much look toward any recommendations of how to best do this. A part of this application, we would be required to submit a maintenance plan which would guarantee that we would, for certain months, we would. Maintain the exterior of the property from the fence to the property line to make sure that the property wasn't falling and out of. Out of the.
Well, our provider uses a lot of solar projects, uh, all of them say, uh, supply. Uh, typically they're put on one or thirty-foot centers, which is really a lot of good, create screen. Uh, a lot of places up here on, uh, one-thirty and Windsor Road, they put in some, uh, little four-footers that are dead. Different product. They weren't, the right plants that weren't maintained. Ideally for a screen, you need to be going out on eight or ten-foot centers with a sizable plant, which would be a. Eight or ten-foot tall arbor vine. Uh, I think that's something odd factor for a visual screen on this, in addition to with this. And that's a considerable cost. Little container of turmeric.
Yeah, ultimately, we, we think it can be done and. So. So right now, the design that we have, the entirety of the project is being covered by our providers that. But, but we've seen forty percent of it is really visible to the neighbors' properties, so. Right, potentially, if these are, if we're having to install a thousand-dollar arbor vitas, uh. I think we, this current design has maybe two-hundred or three-hundred of them, so I don't think this project could afford three-hundred thousand dollars of planting, and. But I think we could very much. Follow through with recommendations about how to best conceal the panels behind it, where the array would be, and. And be required to follow those, those instructions.
Okay. Comments?
Can I change my, I told him I didn't want to speak about the attractive help too, if I can.
Sure. Come on up. Yeah, you can sign up, right?
I didn't sign in because I wasn't gonna speak, but I will sign in if you'd like me to. My name is Wee Janish. I live at one oh three East Spadless here in St. Joseph. I've lived there for eighteen years. Um, our property is not adjacent. We, we view that property. So, um, for us, uh, we were here at the planning and zoning meeting, which we completely appreciate. And their time and everything that they did, uh, for us to hear more about the project, because we didn't really know a lot besides what was in the letter. So we learned a lot that meeting, um. There was some concerns about the aesthetics and the FFA, you know, not being able to do that. But I think the majority of everybody was, this is a flood plain. There's water. We are more concerned about the water and what that's gonna do for our, our area. I am not against solar. I think if people want solar on their homes, that is a good way to help even out the energy crisis. But that is their choice for them. It's not a choice for the neighborhood. So there's not been enough studies on the EMFs and how closely you can live to these farms to be safe. So for us, it's, um, there's no legal requirements for setbacks, but then with glare, the humming noise, things like that. Three hundred feet is where most of them have been the minimum or, or the maximum. You're asking some of these neighbors for like sixty feet, which I don't think is fair. Um, I understand that the Butts Allos would like to do something with their property, but if I wanted a twelve-foot fence. Around my entire house, you would tell me no, even though it's my property. So I feel like that's just me, but I'm not affecting the rest of the neighborhood. So I guess the question is, is this something you would want in your backyard? Is this something you want in the new subdivision that's gonna go out in the other side of Crest Lake or wherever? Are you gonna set a precedence for having a solar farm inside the village, inside the town? Yes, there is a farm ground inside the town, but it's always been that way because that land can't be developed. For housing. There's a tile that runs there and all of that. It shouldn't have a solar farm in the middle of town. There's a lot of other issues that go with, you know, that people are, um, have, um, hypersensitive. Sensitivities to the EMFs or whatever. So I don't know if they've taken that into consideration or if somebody wants to move there. Our property values will go down. Um, talking to the realtors, they do go down by having the solar farms there. So not against solar. Great, if you want it on your house, that's wonderful. I don't think we should take farmland to do that, but I don't think it should be in the middle of the village. It's not something that we should have, and it's not something we should be asked to put in our backyard. They don't live there. It's not in their backyard. It's in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Last chance.
Uh, very briefly, in regarding the EMFs, i- in the fact, document, we, um, we did research on electromagnetic frequencies, and there's no. There's no correlation between radiation and solar panels, and also there is a. It has been proven that that houses that are guaranteed to have electricity, it'd be cheaper for them, or sell at. At a lower or a higher rate and that are easier to sell, and that is what this project is bringing to the homeowners who are Jason and people in the village.
We have one last second, if that's all right. Is it okay?
This is the end.
In fifteen, no, no offense, I love that it's like you're jumping off and doing your own business and all that, love that. But to say in fifteen, ten, fifteen, twenty years, you're gone. Who gets this? Where does it fall into? That's where everything falls into disarray. And you can't guarantee you're gonna be in business to take care of it.
They shouldn't have, the value of this asset is worth enough so that if anything were to happen to Sangamon Solar. The owners of the actual, of the, of the system would still own the asset. And so there's no scenario where something happens to Sangamon Solar and that somehow leads to liability and harm to the neighbors. That this project is, once it's installed and once it's operational. It will only be in the project's best interest, whoever owns it, to have the project in operation.
Okay. We cut off the dialogue back and forth here, just really is just. You get a public hearing, so, uh. Looking for thoughts from those.
The zoning board. Yeah, the zoning board denied the request. I have, I have no reason to override what. They deny already.
I agree. I, I'm listening to people like, I wouldn't want this in my backyard. I agree with you on that. Uh, I do think that solar is a good option, uh, so I see both sides, but it comes down to like. There's a reason that it's on board. I guess I don't see a reason to.
So we need a motion to. Deny the application for the.
Well, your choices are to make a motion, well, you're, you're voting on a couple of different things. You, you voted whether you want to rezone the property, which is one of the requests. Uh, and then you also, let's see.
Special use.
No, you know, um, the special use has already failed. It's not on your agenda, and if you sort of, sort of things. Then we put it back on, and then we republish it, insert over the specialties, but you've got. Uh, whether you want to amend your zoning ordinance to add, um. Solar farm is a special use category add, and whether or not you want to rezone this property. From, uh, residential to ag. Those are the two things. Am I correct, Joe? So your choices are to make a motion for those two things to happen, that can be separate motions. To make a motion to not let them happen, or not make a motion at all, and if there's no motion, then it fails to be one.
Those two issues can be in one motion. Um, or you want to.
I think that they could be in one motion. Okay. I think, uh, you've got ordinances that I drafted for each. So someone wanting to make a motion in favor, but we want to make a motion to approve the ordinances that have submitted. But if someone doesn't make a motion on those, then it just dies for lack of action. If you want to make a statement out as against it, then I think you just make a motion against it, and then that'd be on the record. Those are your three choices.
I didn't give the copies of the ordinance for the denial, so there's the do not.
No, there's no ordinance for denial. There's an ordinance approving or resigning, and there's an ordinance, uh, amending the zoning classification. And the specialty use permit portion.
So what I'm hearing is a motion to. Not prove. You, you're, you're just gonna, you just make a motion, if you're not wanting to do it, just make a motion to deny both zoning amendment applications. To, to, to deny the zoning.
That works too.
That, yes.
I made a motion to deny both of the zoning applications. Discussion, no?
Further discussion?
Childers?
Yes.
Wilpersburg?
Yes.
Cummings?
Yes.
Walsh? I'm sorry, Peters?
Yes.
Motion passed, Laura.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Next, in new businesses, a resolution on many personal policies, making updates. Policy. Should have that in our first, uh, there should be a resolution.
Behind the word, I did. The power was.
Bereavement, bereavement is up. Um, so basically, the policy before was that, um, employees, if they had qualifying laws, which was not applying. Um, could use up to five days. Could use up to five days at a time, you know, that's, that's the bereavement. It was misapplied historically, so we're cleaning it up, and we're making it more, um, in line with what other agencies similar to us are doing. So this policy will make it further to the bereavement days. Qualifying laws, we've defined qualifying laws, and then I would, um. I can remember what the act is, but the, the bereavement act, um, they can take up to, uh. Uh, up to the ten days and either vacation sick or unpaid, their choice. So that's what our policy does.
Which is pretty typical. It's just updating.
It's just backing up, and you can, I have the other agency's policies copied. Oh, yeah, no, no, it's, it's pretty, it's, uh, it just, it was needed for a little bit, so, um. It's due, uh, but if you, if you're okay with it, we just need a motion to approve the.
Second.
Yes.
Cummings?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Childers?
Yes.
Motion passed, Laura.
Thank you. Uh, the next one's, uh, related personnel policy, return to work policy, thirty-one. Way in on this. This is one that are, of the IML, um, RMA requires of us. Um, it's basically just giving guidance on employees who are injured, the resources that are available, so on. Um, our insurance is requiring that we adopt this policy and add to our personnel policies.
Um, it's, uh, pretty well exactly what they sent us and asked to be put into the policy, uh, with some slight revisions that were made with our waiver, um, attorney. But if there's any questions, I'm not gonna answer those. Otherwise, just need a motion to the three to get a resolution.
Any discussions?
Make a motion. Return to work.
Okay.
Cummings?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Childers?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed.
And then the last thing in new business, uh, came up last meeting. Terry spoke to it. Yeah, it is, several of us have, those were a third time uh, that we have separated the parks out into their own fund so we can track the costs of the fund. And what we're finding is that literally there's hundreds of thousands of dollars uh, to operate the, the parks, uh, in, in town. We've chosen to put some budget stuff in here regarding that. Um, the question is what do we do? What do we do about this? It's important to the village. It's important to the citizens. I get calls. We get calls all the time, the sports leagues, uh, you know, folks that use the parks, uh, what is the, not the football, the pickleball, he's like saying pickleball, softball, baseball, soccer. We hear from all of them about uh, the deteriorating conditions in the parks. We've looked at how expensive it is. If we do nothing, uh, it's starting to fall apart if we don't do anything. There's a this thing in there that shows at the bottom. If we, and this has been suggested by Art in the past, uh, when, then correct me if I'm wrong here, Mark, when they passed the grocery tax act, I'll look at. They allowed non-home rule cities, municipalities to be able to add another half a percent in increments of point two five percent or something like that, right?
It's up to one percent.
Up to one percent. And we have a half percent.
For the grocery tax?
No, it's sales tax. Yes, you're correct. Yes. So, uh, I went, I've done a little research on what champagne or banner ran tools away there at one and a half percent. We would still be, we would go from one half percent to one percent and it would produce the numbers that you see on this spreadsheet to get us started. And that's not the only thing as well, um. I want to talk to the township about their participation and offered to participate in the vast because we have a lot of folks that live in Wilkshire, Willa Day, Heather Hills and other subdivisions around that are in the village that obviously use our parks, you know, kids playing games and uh, what we're trying to do is is get this balanced out so that the general fund can start doing things like fixing Third and Grand Street and other things, infrastructure, uh, projects around town instead of paying, you know, Robert and Peter pay Paul for parks. So we're not voting on this tonight. Uh, I'm bringing it up because I know in YouTube land and, and on, online, we're gonna hear some opinions. Uh, but this is, uh, I don't, we don't want to raise property taxes. And there are very few other revenue sources that, that we can do. There's, we can cobble together like video cannabis telecom, some of the smaller ones in with this. I had Joe run, and I don't think it's in your package, but I had him run for me. What it, uh, what our deficit would be without sales tax. And that, uh, column, if you're looking at that spreadsheet. Oh, did he, did he get that? Okay. I didn't want to make comments.
Is there a run somewhere?
Yeah, there's one that's got a additional one. Yeah, yeah. Uh, those would be our deficits that would come out of the general fund, a hundred and thirty thousand. Projected eighty-three, ninety, ninety-seven, hundred, and it's gonna grow without any, without any major projects or yeah, everything stays the same and nothing breaks or
That's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen.
I guess you can still make in addition to this, make better sources for sales tax rather than
This is right.
I have a question. Like, I have a note. There was a thing about the telecommunications tax that was set aside for the baseball. Is that, or was that set up originally? Is that like phone line, internet?
Yeah, it was phone lines.
Phone lines.
Looked at like how that's been trending down and it's probably gonna continue that way. So that means that that deficit just continues to grow. That's what I think.
Right. I think telephone was phone lines and it's, as people cut the cord, that revenue just drops substantially. So we don't need to make any decisions tonight.
No.
If there's, anybody has any comments or discussions, uh, I want to get it on the plate because we would have to, in order for this to take effect in January, we have to pass it before October. We have to notify them in October.
It has to be to them delivered by October one.
Okay, so that means yeah.
If we can, the degrade that way.
So
So I think one of the things that really stayed with me that Joe provided is this is a modest tax change that will provide a stable, long-term solution. Moving towards, it's not gonna take care of everything, but we're moving in the right direction. I feel like we need something. I don't think that the that are charged to those, um, organizations that you could make up anywhere close to what is needed.
No.
At all. And if it continues to get worse and not maintain, you'll have less and less. People want it. I would like to see the park use more. I know that there was like a baseball softball that's been a week and other people coming in using the park. I think that's a good thing, but you really can't, so those, you know, like one weekend organization things to take over that for the cost.
Yeah. The user fees are two percent.
Such a small portion of like the overall.
Overall, you, you can't, you can't put that on them or just break everything.
About our community, that has to hold in the cancer heart and the sports backlash. And you know, like maybe when Mr. Bud's always saying that like if that area was, like, say that was a good job park area or or, or whatever, we would then have to help more people to maintain like that. So we need to probably write this shit.
Sports, sports fees would be roughly seven thousand, six hundred of a hundred and seventy-four-ish.
Not much, not even a
A hundred and fifty, half a percent. So and we did, if we don't want to price them out, we want to encourage you to bring people down. But this, this, uh, sales tax issue gives us impetus to on economic development, like we're trying to get other businesses in town so that they can raise the sales tax. I'm not raising the sales tax. We could collect more sales tax for the parks to have a better industry. So I'm just throwing it out there for us to chew on.
Right. You're not comparing it to my champagne thing. I to one open, Russell. That's why we can't.
Yeah, if we, the, the point that you were just making, right? We have new businesses that um, projected hundred and fifty-five, one sixty, one sixty-five. I mean, if we get a substantial amount like four or five businesses or something like that, the amount that, you know, if you have one, um, drive-through, you'll fast food restaurant that's near seventy-four as an example, um, just give or take, that's around fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, let's just estimate it. Ballpark. So it's real, um, it's real to us. So if we have a level of growth, that's that's why that's important. It's not just because we have a bunch of stuff. It's, it's, it's helpless.
This is a real, this is a real need for Pilates. It has been for a long time. And everybody said it knows. Everybody out there knows it. Yeah. So we don't, like I said, we don't need, we take any action to all the folks that we think about this.
It'll be actually ready next week. The, the law. Check that out. But by next meeting and just that, that, not longer. The second one is September, but the second one is September. Is the deadline we're gonna get it off the books by June. No, like the mayor said.
Okay. Old Business, second reading of the amended appropriations ordinance for twenty-five to six.
It's the same one that was presented, um, last meeting, just last meeting was to give you and then the public get a chance to look at it. Uh, but all we need is a motion to approve. There's no comments.
Uh, what was, I just, because I didn't understand what's the public benefits change? What's that?
It's the, um, it's giving you the ability to, uh, the amount of money that's set aside for the community building.
Okay.
It's giving you the ability to distribute that money
Okay.
to the group that's working on the community building project.
Just kidding.
You do not have to do it. This doesn't commit you to anything. But it gives you the option to, if you want to grow this.
Any other questions on that? Do we need a motion on this second reading or not? We do?
This is just my, it's been remarked for this that we're holding on to. And so we're just dispersing it and being, we're off the books, but it's theirs now.
Yeah, we, uh, we've been the custodian of it for a while. It's, um, if we, we just make hair papers with this money, basically.
Um, with regard to that and not to speak to this specifically, but to issue I'm, uh, Joe, I'm working on, uh, bring for you guys for considerations of policy on accepting gifts. Because there have been several public projects that they want the village to hold the money for private, raise privately raised money for private projects. You know, or even public projects, but you know, I'd rather not take anything unless we have a specific plan and timeline. You know, with church or like the splash pad, or there have been several of those projects. And now that we have the San Joe Rec Foundation, it's a five-one-C-three. Some of these can go that way to keep it on the private side, but we're gonna be looking for the so we don't get burdened. But I'm not saying that it's all burdened and you get, get money, but you're holding, we're not really in the holding property business, the holding cash.
Well, and it's also just frugal for, goes not the right word, but checks and balances.
Right.
Yeah.
So, okay. Do we have a motion? We didn't, did we?
No.
I have, I have a question every bit.
I'll say it.
Peters?
Yes.
Childers?
Yes.
First.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Are there any questions in the staff report?
I'm always available to do the other questions after the fact. You can, you know, let me know, but, um, other than that, I guess with my update, you ready for me to go, go ahead with that? Um, we're hopefully gonna have the option to purchase a agreement back from Miss Taylor and his attorney for next meeting is my hope. So other than that though, happy to answer any questions on the report.
We had no submissions to the RFP for the church. So that's out there. But if there's anybody else have any things you want to bring up or add? I don't. Motion to adjourn? I'm motion to adjourn.
Awesome.